I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask the city clerk to call the roll. Mayor Sorel, here. Assistant Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Councilor Grasso.
Here.
Councilor Farini.
Yes.
Councilor Marshon.
Here.
Councilor Penelakis.
Yes.
Councilor Hines.
Yes.
Councilor Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse.
Yes.
I want to ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silent prayer and then we'll allow our Assistant Mayor Alec Hanson for the last time will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by God Bless America.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, God bless America.
We're going to get right down to the presentation and all of you people know that this is Alec, this is the Assistant Mayor Alec Hanson's last night with us and I'd like to read the following proclamation, if I can get through it all without crying. Whereas Alec Hanson is stepping down as Assistant Mayor and bringing to close six highly regarded consecutive terms on the Portsmouth City Council. And whereas during the past 11 years Alec has been a steady force and a leader in many areas of great significance to our city. And whereas his contribution as Assistant Mayor has been highly valued, particularly his willingness to take on any task that is required of him. Whereas as Chairman of the Joint Budget Committee Alec has been an extremely effective liaison between the council and the city departments during the annual budgeting process and during his tenure with the city bond rating, excuse me, has increased at its highest level ever. Whereas as Chairman of the Traffic and Safety and Parking Committees Alec has diligently worked to ensure that the city streets remain safe and effective while always being sensitive to the needs and the desires of our residents. And whereas his distinguished leadership in these and so many other areas, including the library, will be sorely missed, as will his great financial and business sense and his valuable counsel to all of us. Now therefore I Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do hereby join with all of his fellow members of the City Council in thanking Assistant Mayor Alec Hanson for his many, many years of dedicated service to the City of Portsmouth and its residents and wish him and his wife Debbie the very best as they begin their new life of winter residence in Florida. He will definitely be sadly missed, not only by me but the whole council, both as a highly valued member of the City Council and as a kind and supportive personal friend, given with my hand and the Seal of the City of Portsmouth on this 22nd day of November 2004. Evelyn Sorel, Mayor of the City. I'm going to ask Alec to come down around. I'm going to have Debbie come up too, appreciate it, and then after I do the presence John and all of us will go down on the chair. I can't reach you. Sorry, we're going to miss you. Debbie, hope you haven't got one. This is a little bit of Portsmouth that you can take with you and there's a t-shirt in there for both of you. Be careful, there's a cup in there too. Take care. Love you both. Sit right down with him now. When I sit down, I'm going to rock your chair. And yours is on the way to Florida.
All right.
Okay? We're down to the acceptance of the minutes. Would we like to basket these, everyone?
Yes.
All right. October 4th, 2004, October 25th, 2004, and November 8th, 2004.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We're down to the public comment session and we have 14 speakers, so we will be doing two minutes apiece tonight on each speaker. I think you all realize the way it works. When Bob Sullivan holds up the little card, that means please, sit down. Don't make me gavel you down now. The first person is Dick Ingram, 500 Market Street, on the Sheraton proposal.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and if I might just very briefly extend the chamber's thanks to Assistant Mayor Hanson for everything that he's done for the city. We are a better place because he has served. And with that, I'm here to state support for the proposal that we'll hear later tonight to develop property adjacent to the existing Sheraton Hotel. We see this at the chamber as consistent with the plans that the city has developed over a number of years to redevelop the northern tier and we think that it is a very appropriate project for the city and we and I look forward to working with both the city and the developers as this project goes forward to make it happen. Portsmouth is a premier destination, both for tourist travel and increasingly a premier destination for business travel and we need a facility like this, both to attract business that we cannot attract at the current time and also to serve local needs that have been well documented with the closing of the conference center at Yocan's. So we think that this fills a very vital need for the city. We expect that the benefits from this to extend to the business community and the community at large. It will create demand for goods and services beyond the development itself and we think that is good for the city. It will help with our parking problems and absorb automobile traffic before it gets to the center part of the city as it comes in off of the Market Street Extension and I offer all of this with the knowledge that we're talking about working with a developer who has proven to be a good partner and a good citizen for the city and we certainly look forward to doing whatever we can at the chamber to continue the good progress that's been the history here. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person is Rudy LeBeau, 33 Deer Street, Sheridan proposal.
Good evening. The only thing I have to bring up is that as a resident of Market Wolf Condo Association, which is located on the grounds of the Sheridan Hotel, our association currently has approximately 58 parking spots in the outdoor garage and nowhere in the memorandum of understanding did I see any mention of those spots. So I just want to make sure that I could bring it to the council's attention for any further negotiations they may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
The next person is Diane Kelly Teff, 69 Richards Avenue, petitions.
Good evening. At the new library bond hearing in 2002, it was confirmed by officials that the $7 million bond was not tied to a site. It was also confirmed that the prior referendum vote to build a new library was not site specific. In fact, at that bond hearing, the majority of speakers were in favor of a new library but were opposed to the JFK site. Many speakers gave conditional support of the JFK site, provided the city addressed numerous concerns raised by residents. Our city manager assured everyone that minimum impact to the neighborhood was a top priority. To date, the concerns by residents have not been addressed, they have been compounded. In initial public hearings, past and recent encroachments on Pierce Trust property were never mentioned. A final plan with insufficient parking for the library and displaced parking for the school and residents was not part of the original plan scrutinized by the public. If the city's current plan for this site had been presented at any point in the site selection process originally, it could have never been considered. In short, the negative impact of the restricted site to the proposed library itself, the middle school, the ball fields, the Pierce Trust land, the South Mill Pond environment, the historic neighborhood, and the unique Portsmouth Armory will cause irreparable harm to all of these resources. This is not a plan for a successful new library, it is a blueprint for disaster. I would like to present a number of petitions endorsed by people, young and old, from every corner of Portsmouth. These 440 signatures represent Portsmouth residents and taxpayers opposed to the Armory site for a variety of reasons. I encourage the citizens of Portsmouth to call city officials and tell them it's not too late to get the right site. Thank you.
You can present those to the city clerk.
The next person is Martin Cameron, 469 Ocean Road, Sheridan.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Sorel, members of the council. Special greetings and goodbye for Alec and Debbie. Hope you enjoy your new travel down to home in Florida. This is Martin Cameron, I don't know if I mentioned my name. On the Sheridan Hotel, I think this, I'm not speaking against it or for it or whatever, but I think there's just a little bit more to it than what we know about. It just doesn't seem like it's really, to me, really Portsmouth. We're getting into these large, huge buildings, I know we need parking garages and so forth and I can understand that, but it just seems like it's going to be, it's not built, being built for the people of the South End, for the people up on Middle Road, Atlantic Heights, Woodbury Avenue, it's not being built for us. And we do see that it's going to benefit the city, say, I come out with a figure that's at $700,000. However, with all the additional burden this will put on the city, do we have any plans or anything been extended here to bring in how many more employees that this could cost a city? I mean, are we going to have to hire like four more policemen? That's $400,000 a year alone right there. How about firemen, probably city workers in the Works Department? Has that been explored? Have we, do we have any figures on that or any projection?
Martin, you don't answer the questions at the public.
Yeah, well, I'm putting the questions out so that you can talk about it and think about it, because I don't know, I haven't seen anything about this. I know it's, you know, like I always say, it's handing out the lollipop and it looks like a good deal and it is a good deal for downtown, for the merchants and so forth, but for the rest of the people of the city of Portsmouth, it's not all ice cream and pie. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
The next person is Bill St. Laurent, 253 Colonial Drive, library costs.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members, and I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving this week and also congratulations, Alex, and I hope your new endeavors makes it real good and I hope you enjoy yourself down there. I'm here to address one of the, we had a meeting at the Portsmouth, recent meeting at the Portsmouth Taxpayers Association and they wanted me to address you with this motion that was made and passed. At a recent meeting, the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers, the members voted unanimously to request the City Council reassess the cost of the new library using the original mythology of the Library Committee and report these figures to the public. As local taxpayers, we are very concerned that the original cost estimate of the new library might have changed and the taxpayers have a right to be kept updated as to the ongoing cost changes. We taxpayers also want to know if the demolition of the JFK Armory, design of the new building, and any site preparations now being done are also included in the total submitted bonded cost of $7 million. We understand as voted by this council that the city manager was given carte blanche power to the entire library project. Does this mean that the city manager, along with the assistants of the current library director, also have power to decide on the future plans and costs of this project? Since we are beyond the talking stages of this project and headed toward building this new library, we taxpayers of this project have a right to know if the original cost estimates have changed and if so, how. We realize that this project has been very traumatic and just, has been very traumatic and justifiably so for many, but the council must not lose sight of the project's cost and the donation part of this project. The taxpayers have heard little or nothing as to the funding, as to the fundraising efforts for this project, which was now, which was projected to be upwards of a possible $3 million. We now have waited long enough for answers concerning the entire project's cost and since we are footing the bill, we have a right to have our questions answered. You all have copies. Thank you very much.
Next person is Jan Barker, Portsmouth Avenue, regarding the Sheridan.
Good evening. My name is Jan Barker and I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed conference complex. I feel strongly about supporting this project and the people who are proposing it for several reasons. First, I've had the privilege of volunteering on many boards in the Portsmouth area. Both nonprofit and for-profit organizations must rely heavily on donations to meet their budgetary goals. Fundraising events, dinners, trade shows are all vital to the health of these organizations that not only serve their immediate constituency but also enhance the quality of life for all of our citizens. This project will provide a much-needed venue for these events, particularly with the recent closing of Yocan's. Second, I have been involved with the chamber's tourism committee since its creation. The committee's goal from the start was to attract guests who will respect our community and enjoy extended stays. The new conference facility and additional hotel rooms will help to attract businesses and major organizations to our area who tend to stay longer and spend more dollars in our community in comparison to the day visitors who take little time to appreciate what we have to offer. These extended stay visitors are a vital component of the economic health of our cultural attractions and organizations. Lastly, I'm committed to supporting growth that aligns with the city's overall economic development goals and I believe that this project meets these goals. The Sheridan and Steve Griswold have a proven record of meeting their obligations, but even beyond that, the Sheridan has proven to be a good community partner. The Sheridan is a sponsor of numerous events, lends its employees for volunteer activities in many of our local and state organizations, and has been a leader in educating our community on the economic impact of quality tourism. I appreciate your time and hope that you do approve this memorandum when we're standing. Thank you.
The next person is Robin Whitaker, Market Street, regarding the Sheridan.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and speak on behalf of my neighbor, the Sheridan. I am from the Alvin Scholes Steamship Company and I think this is a very exciting proposal for several reasons. You know, I commend the Sheridan for their vision and their creativity with partnerships. They're not trying to change the foundation of Portsmouth. They had the vision to build a hotel between a salt pile and a scrap pile and they continue to embrace the fact that Portsmouth is diverse and it is a working port. They're wonderful corporate sponsors in the community and when they make decisions, they think them out to make sure that it's going to benefit everybody. I think that another important issue is that while more and more residents are traveling down to Newington to do their errands and shopping at the larger chain stores and stopping at the chain restaurants for a quick bite to eat, you know, our downtown businesses are suffering and during the off-season, the proposal with the Sheridan stands to bring a lot more business to the downtown during the downtime when there is a lot of room for more people on the streets and in restaurants and in the wonderful shops that we have. I think that, you know, the important thing is they're not just tourists, people who will be coming to the Sheridan will be business people, they'll be residents having life celebrations as anniversaries, balmits, fuzz, and birthdays, and I think that it will be a wonderful asset and I'm pleased to be able to come up here and speak on behalf and in support of it. And there's one thing that I think we all know about the Sheridan and their wonderful staff is they certainly do know how to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Yes, the next person is Rob Robertson, regarding the Sheridan.
Good evening. My name is Rob Robertson. I'm a professor at the University of New Hampshire in the Department of Resource Economics and Development. I'm also coordinator of the Tourism Planning and Development Program. I also serve to, I teach a graduate level course in social impact assessment and have done assessments for the White Mall National Forest, 1A, 1B, and I was a member of the expert panel for the I-93 project. And I'd just like to say that it's my opinion that the proposed conference center will make an important contribution to the north end development tier and will provide the foundation for a gateway to the community of Portsmouth and all that Portsmouth has to offer. As a person who often hosts professional and academic conferences, the convention center is a much-needed sort of thing to bring people to our area. Typically, we have to travel further away than, a long ways away from New Hampshire to hold professional meetings and this would give us the capacity to host those meetings. I would also like to offer the City Council and the staff of the City of Portsmouth the support. I will be teaching this class in social impact assessment and if we can coordinate with staff to kind of work in this process, we'd be happy to do so.
Thank you.
The next person is Katie Collier, 28 Deer Street, regarding Sheridan proposal.
Are you up there, Kathy?
Kathy, couldn't quite read your handwriting, Kathy. It's all tough. 28 Deer Street, regarding the Sheridan.
See, if you had put Jardenaires, I would have known right off.
Hi there. My name is Kathy Collier. My husband and I own Jardenair and we also own 28 Deer Street, which is a property that is very close to the Sheridan. But before we moved there, we were vendors to the Sheridan and we had dealings with their staff and their management from the, I would say, the first six months that we opened and it was always clear to me just how professional they were. And looking forward, it seems to me that after they have won, just a few years ago, the Starwood Award for Best Sheridan in North America, that if somebody is going to bring a conference center into this area, we want it to succeed and this certainly seems like the team to do it. Thank you.
Next person is Stephen Griswold, 250 Market Street, Sheridan proposal.
Good evening. Alex, it's kind of nice when they say nice things about you before the funeral. That's great. I'm going to miss you. I think you've made a tremendous contribution here to Portsmouth.
Thank you.
I add my own thank you for the years that you spent here. I want to thank people that came out tonight to, you know, evident some support for the project. I said enough at the work session and I won't, you know, spend too much of my time with that. Looking back several years ago, back to the mid-'80s, there was an editorial in the newspaper. It was at completion of a project. The editorial said the city and Griswold did what they said they were going to do and they complimented me as a developer. But they went on and they complimented all the land use boards, the historical, the planning boards, all of the boards that are a part of this proposal for it to move forward. This is an important first step in a project that once again addresses a clean renewable resource industry and tourism that doesn't create school needs and other costs at some length, that adds some $16 million a year in spending, $700,000 in taxes, a whole series of things. So, you know, it is, I guess, my hope that we'll address the MOU tonight and take the first step so that we can move on to the next process with the boards. How'd I do, Sally?
Still have a half a minute.
I got a half a minute. Wow. Now about the election. Seriously, thanks very much.
Thanks, Steve.
The next person is Boyd Morrison, 210 Broad Street, regarding library site.
Hello, I'm Boyd Morrison. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I am not here to talk about the library in the sense of the historic demolition of the JFK or the potential abrogation of the Pierce Trust and the taking of recreational lands or the gradual filling in of the South Mill Pond area. Those, other folks will talk about those or have talked about those. I'm actually here to talk about what I would consider a positive and that is the potential of an urban design centerpiece that the library represents to the city of Portsmouth, both as a developmental focus and as a way for people and the city to draw much more of the benefit that it will have if it is located at the current site on Parrott Avenue. Now, this document, the, some say the forgotten document, the Vision Report of 1999, which has been subsequently augmented by the Portsmouth Listens of 2004, stated with new public library at over 25 public hearings, everyone saw it as being something that would be in the downtown and generally in the northern tier. Now, what I find very interesting in hearing the folks speaking tonight about the Sheridan, which is a very exciting proposal as well, is that the parking that will go along with that seems to have some very positive references to some of the concerns that are being brought up at the Parrott Avenue site. Also, one of the things that we've learned, I've worked in urban design projects for many years now, and one of the things that I've learned and we've had some people come and speak, in fact, it was at a city forum that we had that Alex Hanson attended many years ago, 1995 I believe it was, and Stu Dawson came to speak about how when a particular municipal project is built, if it's built in the proper place, you can have private development of 10 to 20 times that amount of investment take place around it. So, having said that, I hope we'll reconsider this site and look at the potential that this could possibly bring to the city. Thank you.
Next is Kevin MacLeod, regarding the Sheridan.
Good evening. I can't speak to the library.
No.
I back what he said. Alex, congratulations and my own personal thank you for all you've done for the city of Portsmouth and for me personally, you've been a great friend.
I'd like to speak in favor of the Sheridan project. Some of these items have already been gone over previously. These would be the parking, obviously we need more parking in the downtown area and this addresses that. When you talk about convention business, convention, and I feel a little bit responsible for this project and I'm the one that closed Yocan's. And I also speak as a competitor, as I own the Comfort Inn, and I'll get to that.
And I'll get to that, what this will do for the competition. Convention business brings people to the area for extended stays, and being within walking distance of downtown, that will enhance all the businesses. Now, convention groups normally don't meet during the summer, July and August, because that's vacation time and factories closing and all that type of thing. So this would be a great enhancement to the shoulder seasons, the fall, April, spring, and even the winter seasons. Now, as a competitor, area hotels will benefit because some of these groups have too many attendees that, in order to stay at that hotel, there won't be enough rooms there, and they'll have to farm those out to other properties. And I'd be more than happy to work in concert with that. Also, groups give their attendees options, price options usually for a bigger package, they can stay at that property, and for lower packages, they can stay at other properties, and we'd benefit from that. This facility is different from Yonkins in that its ability to draw large regional groups, because they handle everything in-house. At Yonkins, they would go to the function in one building and have to walk across the parking lot and inclement weather and whatever, in order to get to their rooms. So I think this is a great project, and I stand behind it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next is George Hosker, regarding the Holiday Parade.
Hello, George.
Good evening. George Hosker, Austin Street, Portsmouth. As many of you are aware, the 2004 Holiday Illuminated Parade will be taking place on Saturday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM. City Council, do not write that time down, because we need you folks to meet us at the Lower City Hall parking lot at 5:15. That's 5:15, December 4th, so the trolley can pick you up. You will leave the parade after the Portsmouth Honor Guard, and then we will drop you and your families off at the grandstand, so then you can enjoy the parade, and then the trolley will come back after Santa and gang leave to pick you up and to bring you back to the Lower City Hall lot for your ride home, which you will provide. Of course, we're very sad that Alex Hansen will not be here to help us judge with floats this year. Big fan, always have been, as well as his wife Deb, who ran Pro Portsmouth so beautifully for many years. This parade is looking to be as big as ever. Already, we have 27 illuminated floats, more than 30 marching units, five bands, including bands from Portsmouth, Dover, Spalding, Somersworth, and of course, the Bagpipers, which seem to be extremely popular except in the cold weather. So, I am meeting with City Manager Bo Henko a week from tomorrow, and I'm sure other department heads to iron out any details that have not been ironed out as well, and I look forward to seeing you at the parade. Just a reminder, I will be 80 years old, because I will be in my Nutcracker makeup, but I'll jump on the bus and wave hello, but I won't look like this at all. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
The last speaker under public comment is Leah Caswell, Library.
Hello. I would like to speak to the preservation of the Armory one last time. Hopefully, this will be the last time. And also, what I see is the destruction of that entire Mill Pond area. This is just the beginning of the end of the history of the South Mill Pond, because we will most assuredly lose that beautiful middle school. We will certainly lose the trust, and we will have two very large, modern buildings which belong in the north end along with the Sheraton. And as I think Robin Whitaker said, that when the Sheraton came in, it didn't destroy anything. We are destroying Portsmouth's history. I spoke to Dorothy Vaughn several times before she died, and I considered Dorothy a thoroughgoing preservationist, as I know we both, most of us do. We both, meaning the mayor and I, I guess. And at the end of each conversation, I would say, "I think we're going to be able to preserve it, Dorothy." And she said, "Yes, I think we will too." So, the city is a wonderful historic city, which we trade on for all our economics, and I believe we must keep as much history as we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends the public comment session. We're down to the public hearing, and I am going to pass my gavel to our Assistant Mayor for the last time and let him run the public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held in Portsmouth City Council chambers on Monday, November 22nd, 2004, and we are on proposed ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7.330, no parking Islington Street, Route 1 bypass overpass. The complete ordinance is on file and available at the City Clerk's office. We'll open the public hearing, and maybe John Burke wants to explain our Parking and Transportation Director. I'm going to ask him to come forward if it's okay with the City Manager.
Absolutely.
Fine. I think all the rest of the folks came about this one subject, John, so.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, and thank you, Alex, for all the time with traffic safety. This particular ordinance is really just a housecleaning effort. I think the bridge was originally referred to as the I-95 overpass, but it was really the bypass overpass that we're cleaning up.
Thank you, John. Anyone wish to speak? First time around? For or against, or simply to the issue? Second time around? For or against, or simply to the issue? Hearing none, we'll close the hearing. There you go, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Page three is on at 9 o'clock.
Great job. Now we're down to the approval of grants and donations. First, this is the acceptance of the Police Department grant, 2003 Homeland Security Two.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to accept this grant on behalf of the Portsmouth Police Department for $49,815.73 to purchase and equip a mobile emergency and incident command center.
Do you want to get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The acceptance of the Police Department donations, would you all like to basket those?
Aye, Your Honor.
Yes.
I think it's important that we list the ones who contributed, plus for the Honor Guard I'm talking about.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Why don't you do that?
Thank you, Your Honor. The first donation is for $25 from Mr. and Mrs. Robert Hall to be contributed to the Portsmouth Honor Guard. The list of other donations of total of $350 are as follows. From Captain David Ferlin, $50. From Mayor Evelyn Sorrell, $10. From Alex, Assistant Mayor Alex Hansen, $50. Mrs. Fran Price, $20. Seacoast Baseball Inc., $50. Seacoast Ophthalmology, $50. Mrs. Barbara Packells, $20. And Patches and Fared Pavement, $100, for a total of $350 to go to the Portsmouth Honor Guard.
Did I get a second on that? For discussion? What?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor.
Okay, very good.
I move to approve and accept the donations to the Portsmouth Police Department as listed.
Second.
The Assistant Mayor has the chair and recognizes the mayor.
I would like to clarify something tonight, here and now, not only for the newspapers, but for the people sitting out there. That $10 check was written out of my own personal household account, not taken out of the mayor's fund. So I just wanted to make that very plain.
I'll pass the gavel back. Do a disclaimer that the Assistant Mayor's $50 check came from the Assistant Mayor and no Assistant Mayor's fund.
Very good. Any other discussions, Ned? No? Any other discussion? You ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to considerations of resolutions and ordinances. First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 9, miscellaneous public welfare by the addition of Article 8, entitled "Aggressive and Menacing Panhandling Prohibitions." Counselor Pandalakis?
Yes, I would like to move first reading of the ordinance as submitted and hold a public hearing, and second reading at the December 6th, 2004 City Council meeting.
Second. Discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
On the second page, under the penalty, it doesn't have any specific penalty listed. And in talking with the city attorney, felt that maybe we should put something in there. So, I'd like to have this come back with a penalty of $100 on, and if, at the public hearing, if people think that's too much, we can lower it, or we could adjust the amount at that time. But right now, there's no penalty amount listed.
Bob, would you want to speak to that at all?
Well, Your Honor, if there's no objection from anyone on the council, I'll just produce a second draft with the amendment in it.
Harold? Sorry, Harold.
Yes, Your Honor, may I ask our city attorney a question?
Yes.
Bob, was this ordinance taken from another community or another town?
It is fashioned after an ordinance from the City of Madison, Wisconsin. He did change it a little bit.
Well, I'm willing to go to public hearing, but I've never, never read so much legal mumble jumbo in all my life. But I'm willing to go to public hearing and listen to what the public has to say, but unless they convince me, I don't think this is necessary. In fact, I read into this ordinance if I was sitting in, breaking grounds on a Friday evening, and I asked somebody, "It's your turn to buy a cup of coffee," I could be in violation of this ordinance. You know, I think it's going to hurt Little League who is out there soliciting for Tag Day. I think it's going to hurt the Salvation Army. I think, I'm willing to go to public hearing, but I'm asking my fellow counselors, is this ordinance necessary?
Bob, the way that's written, that will not affect the Salvation Army, will it? Or Tag Day for the kids?
Only if the Salvation Army or if the kids were menacing and aggressive.
Okay, very good. That's what we want, clean remat. Any other discussion on this?
Well, since I'm not going to be here for the public hearing, I just have one question. The person is panhandling and trying to get two or three bucks. They don't have the $100 fine. What are we going to do with them? Put them in jail and cost us $100 a day housing? So I just would kind of take that in consideration, and be careful what you wish for, you may get it. So, don't send them to Florida.
Ah, you got another one down there on every street corner. Are we all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Second reading of ordinance amending Chapter 7, Article 3, Section 7, Period 330, no parking Islington Street, Route 1 bypass overpass.
Move to pass second reading of amended ordinance as submitted and hold third and final reading December 6th, 2004.
Second.
Being no discussion, we're ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Third and final reading of ordinance amending Chapter 8, Article 2, Section 8, Period 202-Dash Dog Park Rules and Regulations. Madam Mayor? Yes, Counselor Pandalakis.
Move to pass third and final reading of this amended ordinance.
Second.
Being no discussion, we're ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. We are down to a letter from Marjorie Hubbard, Greater Portsmouth Chamber of Commerce, requesting permission to hang Portsmouth Harbor Trail flags at 26 key sites for the 2005 season.
Move the City Manager with power.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Now we're down to the City Manager, and John has five items that require action.
Thank you, Your Honor. The first item that I have under my name is a proposed memorandum of understanding between the City of Portsmouth and Harbor Corp. As a result of the work session conducted by the City Council on Monday, November 15th, I've worked with the legal department to finalize the MOU between the City of Portsmouth and Harbor Corp. that would facilitate a public-private partnership for a public parking facility associated with the expansion of the Sheraton Conference Center. And for your information, I've attached a copy of the memorandum of understanding. There was a lot of discussion at the work session, a lot of questions asked. I think it's important to understand that this memorandum of understanding is non-binding by either party. Assistant City Attorney, who did much of the work on this, Suzanne Woodland is here to answer any questions you might have. But I would like to speak to the issue that Martin Cameron brought up earlier, because I think it's a valid question. Because of the economies of scale downtown and because of what we have going on downtown, we don't believe this will cause any additional requirement for services for public works for the fire department or, and I want to speak out of term for the police department, but I believe it would not cause an additional workload. Depending on, in the event that there might be some extraordinary convention or conference center, there might be some overtime that would be incurred, but I don't believe there would be a requirement for new positions or equipment. I believe our equipment in the fire department could handle this. It's going to stay within all the height requirements that we now have within the city. So I think it was a good question that Mr. Cameron had, but I don't believe that it will affect the staffing levels for the city. With regards to the utilities, that again is something that's being worked on by the staff as we go through this. I believe from the city's perspective on utilities, water, and sanitary sewer, that we are capable to handle those issues. Again, the memorandum of understanding gets the project started. This is a project that has been worked on by the City Council and the city's Economic Development Commission and others, the Sheraton, for a number of years, and the MOU basically outlines some of the requirements that we may have to face in the future, but this allows the Sheraton to proceed to start to move forward with the land use agencies, and that would include, of course, the planning board, the Historic District Commission, the Technical Advisory Committee, and those types of agencies. So that is why we're here tonight before you to get that formal authorization.
Madam Mayor, I move to authorize the City Manager to enter into an MOU with Harbor Corp. for the purposes of the proposed public-private partnership for the development of the public parking garage and conference center. May I?
Very good. Very good. Hi, Assistant Mayor.
This is an outstanding project that Mr. Griswold and I have been talking about for about eight or nine years. It's just a prime location, and for the northern tier, it's a heck of an opportunity. With 1,200 attendees at a convention, it will help all of our community, all of the hotels. I've talked to some different hotel owners, and there's going to be a need for trolley service to come from the conference center, and things are going to be buzzing. $700,000 on the bottom line for additional tax revenue, and then multiplier effect for our businesses. This is a win-win situation. Mr. Griswold just does first-class operations. If you've visited any of his other properties, they're also first-class, and I just think this is a win-win for the City of Portsmouth, and this is going to launch that northern tier, and would encourage my fellow counselors to vote. to vote.
Could we get a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Hi, Harold?
Yes, uh, I'd like to ask our city manager a question, please. I, uh, I fully support the, uh, the memorandum of understanding on this issue, but going back to utilities, John, um, I'd like to see it in writing at an early stage that all utilities such as electrical, telephone cable, and, uh, and fire alarm be underground and let it be known early in this memorandum.
And, and I, I, I think that's something that, uh, that we're gonna strive to do and I, I just don't have enough of the technical information to be able to give you, uh, an absolute, but, um, certainly, uh, that's something that we'll note.
Also, one more question, Your Honor. Uh, on page three, uh, number eight, cooperation, um, the last sentence states Harbor Corp., acknowledges that the city does not have control over land, local land use boards and other authorities. Now, as this issue travels through the land use boards and, uh, the city council members do not have a chance to attend these meetings or, uh, have a chance to, uh, read up on the minutes, I, I hope the city manager will come back to the city council and keep them abreast as the project progresses over the years. I think that's quite important.
John?
What's the other question? I wasn't sure.
Uh, well, he just wants you to keep him abreast.
Well, as I do with all projects, Counselor, I think we, we, we will keep you advised and certainly it's an important project and, uh, we will, uh, make sure the council has all the information so that they're aware as we go through the major steps.
It's just the idea that it's gonna be a long process. There'll be many hearings and, uh, you know, the council might not be aware of the agendas on certain, uh, land regulatory boards such as the planning, HDC.
Well, we do provide you with those on a regular basis, uh, Counselor, but certainly I can make sure that we have that information for you. All right, John, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Pandalakis?
Yes. I'd just like to say that I think this is a very good idea for the city appointment and I know that the Sheridan has been one of the best neighbors we ever got, even though they said it was never gonna work down there. So I can't wait for you to start before the boards. Any other, yes, John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to say also that it is a fine project and I'm very excited about it and I do look forward to the opportunity for the people of Portsmouth to utilize the board process to, uh, make their thoughts and concerns know, known so that we get the best possible input from all concerned for what is no doubt a great project.
Any other discussion? I guess we're ready for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, uh, next item is a proposed acceptance of easement deed regarding Eurasian Oil. Uh, attached information that fully executed and recorded easement deed with respect to the property owned by Eurasian Oil, which is located on Route thirty-three and was known as the Flight Line Sanoco. Attached scenario map showing the easement. Uh, this easement was recommended by the planning board as part of the overall approvals of the site. The easement creates a fifty-foot conservation buffer around the paved area of Eurasian Oil's, uh, operation. Uh, the city attorney's office is recommending that this deed be brought before the city council for acceptance. Once accepted by the city council, the original will be forwarded to the city clerk for permanent filing, and I'd, uh, ask for your approval.
Your Honor, I move that the, uh, council accept this easement deed between the city of Portsmouth and, uh, and the oil company.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Assistant Mayor has assumed the chair and recognizes the mayor.
I have been following this issue for, I would say, about twenty-five years, uh, not only as a city counselor, but as a very hard worker for the conservation, uh, committee here in the city. With reservations, I will vote for this tonight, but with reservations, I would have rather seen a hundred-foot conservation buffer so close to our great barn. I realize, though, that the, um, uh, eighteen-wheelers are gonna be parked a little bit different and will bring no damage to the great barn. So I will vote for it tonight, but I'll be watching you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Farini?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Assistant Mayor, and we will miss you. Um, I would just point out with respect to the easement that, in particular regarding the mayor's concerns, which I think are obviously well-taken, um, this kind of easement gives us an opportunity, well-executed by our legal staff, to have more control than we would typically have over a project of this nature, given the sensitivity of the placement. And I've observed the, uh, site plans as offered, revised, et cetera, in front of the planning board, and I think, again, what the city has in this easement gives us the additional enforcement, uh, ability such that it's, it's an appropriate item and I'll certainly vote for it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next item deals with a, uh, economic development commission report and recommendation on the city's parking impact fee. In the spring of two thousand four, uh, the city council requested that the economic development commission review the city's parking impact fee and report back to you. This, uh, this, uh, report that was developed by the EDC was, uh, put in the hands of a subcommittee of the economic development commission. I wanna tell you, this is one of the hardest-working, uh, subcommittees that I've, I've seen. Uh, they, they must've met twelve, fourteen times to discuss this matter. Presently, the city has a parking impact fee of five hundred dollars for unmet conditions for parking downtown, and they took this charge very seriously and did a lot of research, as you can see in the comprehensive memorandum that I provided, uh, to you. What the EDC subcommittee did and what the EDC as a whole recommends is that the parking impact fee go from five hundred dollars to twelve hundred dollars per unmet parking space. This figure is derived from the city's annualized debt service costs of one year to build a parking space at the current cost of per public garage space, and I've attached an amort, amortization schedule, uh, showing you how they arrived at their number. And the reason that they wanted to tie it to something is they, they had a focus group, they worked with some people downtown, some of the businesses downtown, some of the developers, uh, to tying the fee to a concrete value rather than being an arbitrary number. Uh, they also feel that beginning, they'd like to begin to capture the funds for construction of a new parking facility, given the current proposed potential development of the central business district. And three, they feel that by imposing the fee, it does not stymie development, but at the same time does not create parking demands that surpass the city's ability to provide adequate parking supply and/or reduce parking demand through transit operations. Um, I have, I believe, a representative from the EDC here, I think, uh, is Ed, right? Ed Hayes is here, who worked on the, uh, this, uh, project. This was a very, very hard-working committee. Uh, I think they were able to get a lot of information, uh, and I think this is a reasonable, uh, amount, uh, to move the impact fee. I think most people agreed with that, and they did tie it to a actual tangible, um, uh, number. So if the city council, uh, agrees, then I can bring this matter back to the city council for first reading on an ordinance that would adjust the current ordinance and, uh, would reflect, uh, the recommendations of the, uh, Economic Development Commission.
Would somebody like to move that?
Your Honor, I'll move to authorize the city manager to bring back for the first reading a revision to the city ordinance, Article twelve, section ten dash twelve oh two, that would reflect the recommendation of the EDC for the December sixth, two thousand four city council meeting.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion? Hi, Harold and Joanne.
Um, a question for the city attorney. Mayor, a question for the city attorney.
Yeah, uh, Bob?
Yes, John. Uh, after it goes to first reading, will that have effect on projects that are working its way through the land regulatory boards? Uh, does it have to have second reading?
Once, the actual magic moment is the posting of second reading and public hearing. Once second reading and public hearing is posted, then from that moment onwards, any building permit application which come in will have to satisfy both the existing ordinance and the ordinance under consideration until the council is done considering.
No matter how far through the process of development it has?
No. No, uh, any, any project which is already commenced by that date will go forward under the old ordinance.
I see. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Grasso?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Who will be on next, Assistant Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was, um, impressed with the, uh, thinking behind the new fee number. I, I think it's very important that, um, the amount of money be justified and that it's attached, uh, to a, um, a CPI so that it's adjusted annually and, uh, but I just wanted to commend the group and say that because they gave the reasons the way they did, I think it's, it's going to be an effective number that we can work with.
Yes, uh, Ned?
Thank you, Mayor. I would also like to commend the, uh, the hard work of the group and, um, the obvious, you know, level of analysis and thought that went into the, uh, recommendations. I would only like to comment and perhaps just raise the issue here tonight, um, um, a suggestion. I, I note that the recommendation that the fees be, uh, earmarked for a parking facility as specified in the city's capital plan for two thousand eight. I would like to just suggest that, um, that these funds, um, not necessarily be earmarked, um, for a particular capital expenditure like a parking facility, but that we keep in mind the overall purpose of the parking impact fee, which is that it amounts to money being put in a fund to address, um, the need for parking that was created by the development, uh, you know, that is not met by the developer. And one way to meet that need is for the city to build a parking space, but there are also, or may also, the other ways to meet, alleviate a need for parking, which, for example, could be transit service, shuttle bus, um, other kinds of facilities. So I would only like to suggest that we not lock ourselves in, um, to, um, commitment that these fees are earmarked for a single, um, you know, like it says, capital, uh, capital expenditure, a particular facility, but that we give ourselves the latitude, give the council the latitude to, uh, expend funds to meet the need in more than one way.
Any other? Yes, Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, two, uh, things that have been touched upon in the last few minutes, but that in talking with, uh, different, uh, business leaders downtown in the parking situation, uh, I think that this particular process does two things exceptionally well that I think you'd like to see all projects have, and that is, people often ask, uh, whatever the fine or the fee or whatever the dollar amount is, uh, people wanna know that it's attached to a, a rationale for having that amount. I think that makes people feel a lot better about whatever that number ends up being, and this is a crystal-clear, uh, process of getting to a number. And then the, the flip side of it is, people wanna know that whatever that fee is, that that number is being used, that dollar amount is being used for some other, uh, good or service that's attached to the, the fee itself. And in this case, again, whether it's a parking garage or, as Ned was just saying, some other form of tran, something related to transportation, that makes the community, I think, feel a lot better about them paying their money, 'cause they know that money is going towards something related to the fee itself. So, uh, I think in a lot of ways, this is a, a model for how you'd like to see other projects that involve fees, uh, and the community paying in, uh, to a, to a fund or, or for a program. I think this is a model for how you'd like to do it in other situations, so I commend all involved with it.
Any other discussion? We ready for the vote? Yes, Ned?
As chairman of the fee committee, Steve, I, I will note that and, uh, factor that into our thinking on, uh, fees for this year.
With love.
Okay, I guess we're all ready for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Now we're down, oh, John?
All right, we'll have a couple more.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Again, I would like to thank the, uh, Ed for coming out tonight for, uh, on behalf of the EDC. Uh, the next item is request, uh, for approval of the collective borrowing agreement between the Portsmouth Police Ranking Offices Association and the Portsmouth Police Commission. Um, if you, as you're, as a result of the city council meeting conducted on October fourth, the city council tabled this request for further information. The police commission is requesting that the city council act on the collective borrowing agreement between the Portsmouth Police Ranking Offices Association and the Portsmouth Police Commission, and, um, that's before you tonight. And the first thing you would have to do is vote to remove this item from the table.
So move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed.
Your Honor?
Yes, Counselor Heinz?
Now that this item is off the table, I would move that we pass this, uh, recommended approval, uh, for, uh, the issue at hand, which is the Ranking Offices Association requests for, uh, the particular item of collective bargaining that, uh, is finally reaching near resolution, and I think tonight is a fine time to act on it.
Second?
Very good. Uh, any other discussion? Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, based on the work sessions, and of course I couldn't be wrong, I suspect that this will pass this evening, and I think there's a lot of good reasons for it, too. Uh, I'll, I'm gonna vote against it, but it's not for the reason that some people would think. Uh, this involves an increase of about nine percent, but it's, that number is a little deceptive, and in particular, I wanna give, uh, Jerry Howe a lot of credit. Uh, I spoke with him at length, and I think he and the other commissioners did a fantastic job of explaining the rationale for the number. And I think the number, uh, makes a lot more sense, uh, when you're taking into consideration things like the cost of healthcare and how that increases at an incredibly rapid rate. That said, I guess, uh, the main reason I'm gonna vote against it is because I see, not just with the police department, but with all departments, I see something coming down the line later this year that is gonna create some very, um, undesirable, uh, decisions that have to be made. Uh, and I want, uh, to make it clear from my perspective and, and for the public, that, uh, we're aware of that now, that I think the departments have been made aware of that by the council. We've made a lot of tough, uh, questions over the last couple of months of these departments, and I think that those questions and those decisions are just gonna get tougher, unfortunately, for all involved. And, uh, uh, so I think that, uh, for me, I would like, I'm gonna vote against this tonight, not because I don't think the, uh, because I think the nine percent is incredibly out of whack. Again, when you look at the numbers more, you find they're not. Uh, but I think that there are other considerations, and I feel my responsibility is to, uh, sound that bell, not just for police, far from it, but for all departments in the city. Ring that bell earlier in the process rather than later.
Uh, John would like to speak.
Just, uh, Your Honor, I think it'd be important to, um, actually identify the years of the, uh, the collective borrowing agreement. If the maker of the motion would add that the agreement run from July one, two thousand three to June thirtieth, two thousand, uh, six, I think that would clarify the motion a little better.
Yes, I'll move that, uh, as stated.
And, Your Honor, if I might just, if I might just add another item, I was just speaking to what Counselor Marshawn was saying. I think it's important to recognize this is a, a three-year, uh, pact, uh, fiscal year oh four, which, uh, ended on June thirtieth. There is zero impact for that fiscal year because we, along with other employees in the city, uh, there was, this, the, the wages were frozen, so there was no impact in fiscal year oh four. So that was absolutely zero. So when you're looking at the nine point oh four, you have to put it in context along with, uh, oh six. So if you take a look at the entire collective borrowing agreement and the period that it covers, the three-year period, you're talking about an average of about four point one percent per year. So I think it's important to recognize that. I think, uh, obviously, I'm not debating the issue, it's what you stated, but I just think, I, I just wanted to make sure people understood that it's a three-year pact and it has a four point one percent average to it. Okay?
Counselor Grasso and then Counselor Pandalakis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, in looking over the additional information that we received on this contract over the weekend, I was pleased to, uh, just recall that the, um, chief has said he will not fill two vacant ranking officer positions, which will save the city some money on that budget. And although I know our, our, um, responsibility lies in the area of finances, the wording and, uh, concessions that were mutually agreed upon in the contract, I felt were very important to have the police department run as efficient, as efficiently as they would like it to run. So for that reason, I'll support the contract.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Pandalakis and then the Assistant Mayor?
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Howe for all his hard work of explaining this to me, but I cannot in all good conscience vote for this. Um, I understand everything that's been said to me, but I still cannot vote for it.
Assistant Mayor?
Yes, I, um, wanna be leaving this, uh, body, and this will be contract number fourteen of fifteen, so it's not the start, it's the-
14 of 15, so it's not the start, it's the finishing up of these contracts. And with two positions eliminated, uh, with the increased workload for the remaining ranking officers, uh, I think this is a fine contract, and, uh, I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Reynold?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I would also like to thank, uh, Commissioner Howe and the rest of the commissioners and the chief for the, um, for their hard work, for the, um, preparation and, uh, the work sessions and the initial information that they provided us this past weekend. Uh, as a first-time counselor, we've actually, it seems like this year we've dealt with quite a number of collective bargaining agreements, but this was, this was the first one where we really had a, uh, you know, significant amount of discussion and back and forth, and even, you know, this one was sent back for a little more, um, work. It's been very educational. Um, I intend to vote to approve this collective bargaining agreement, uh, just say that upfront. Uh, and the main reason, um, my decision, as I think I said in the work session, but I'd like to say here publicly, is for me, the issue came down to one of, um, of accountability and, uh, sort of the division of responsibility between the elected police commissioners and the elected city councilors. Um, there's been some concerns expressed, uh, while there have been in the past at the work sessions and even tonight by Councilors Panderlockis and Marshon about the, you know, some of the figures in the contract, and, and I agree that, as it's been stated, they can be a little bit misleading. Um, and obviously, the concern was that in, you know, salary increases, um, of those figures would, would have, uh, an inordinate impact on the overall police department budget and therefore on the overall city budget and therefore on the overall city tax burden. Um, for me, it kind of comes down to the fact that the police commissioners, who are elected by the same public that elects us, are responsible for, uh, managing the department, including negotiating these, um, contractual agreements with the various, uh, unions. And therefore, I'm inclined, uh, particularly as a new counselor, to give substantial deference, um, to the commissioners and accept when they come, uh, and bring us an agreement and recommend that we approve it, to approve it. However, I signaled at the, uh, work session, and again, I'll state it here in full counsel, that, um, they're also going to be responsible for managing the fiscal impact of this contract and the other contracts that we've approved on the overall department. And, um, when it comes budget time, um, that is where certainly the overall buck will stop, um, here at the council level, and we will be, um, ensuring that all of these contractual agreements that we've agreed to for the police and the other departments, uh, don't end up, uh, presenting us, the councilors, with a situation where, oh, well, you know, you have no choice but to approve some inordinate, um, increase in the overall budget.
Uh, Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes, your honor. Thank you, your honor. I know this has been a long-delayed contract. We had many questions that we sent back to the commissioners for answers, and it's only been the last couple of days that I've changed my mind, uh, on approving of this contract, especially as Councilor Grasso has stated, uh, they will not be replacing two ranking officers, and I've been assured that going into the next budgeted year, it will be a very lean and close-to-the-bones-type budget, and we could show tremendous savings in that avenue. So I will be supporting this contract, uh, but I just hope in the future that, uh, we don't have to delay these contracts, uh, for weeks and weeks at a time. Uh, I, uh, I realize this is a very important contract, and so I will be supporting it, your honor.
The Assistant Mayor has assumed the chair and recognizes the mayor.
Well, everyone knows how I feel about our wonderful police department, we're very, very lucky here in the city of Portsmouth. You know, the same thing could happen here is, has just happened in Somersworth, where seven or eight officers have walked off the job. I, I feel they bent over backwards. Uh, the, uh, Jerry Howe, police commissioner, and, uh, the, um, chief and Dave Young, they all bent over backwards to give us more information, to try and to explain it, and I think our city manager explained it very well tonight, and they definitely will get my vote.
Any further discussion? Councilor Farini?
I would like to add that I will be voting for the, um, contract as well. Uh, I do think that the efforts of all concerned, from every perspective, the officers, the chief, uh, the commissioners and the council, uh, was a good, thank effort all around, and it was a real attempt at, at, uh, problem-solving that demonstrated a substantive response that I was quite happy with. Uh, any budgetary concerns that I may have, I don't think, uh, are really the square peg and round hole. I want to put this contract, I think that's for another day and for other issues, and I think that the operational, uh, support that the PD needs, uh, as is set forth in this contract, given the differentials in wages and such, is appropriate, and I heartily endorse the contract.
Councilor Hines? Thank you, uh, Assistant Mayor. Uh, my support for this, uh, bill, uh, is simply that, uh, we are visioning a transitional period in the leadership of the police department, where the educated and skilled actions of the team is bringing into Portsmouth, uh, a really high-tech approach to policing. Uh, the regional, uh, rather, the, um, leadership of the police department is now moving into an era where the, uh, perception of what can happen, what may happen, or what does happen in the city is being anticipated to a higher degree, so that the patrol officer will not be faced with as many, uh, actions, uh, that are, have occurred in the past. We can anticipate, uh, what, who and where they may happen, and by using the, uh, skill that is now present in the ranking offices, I expect that Portsmouth will stand out as the greatest, the best police department in at least this city, if not, uh, I mean, in this state, if not the East Coast.
Any further discussion? You ready for the vote?
Roll call.
Roll call, please. A roll call has been requested. City Clerk?
Mayor Sorrell?
Uh, would you read the, uh, motion again?
Move to approve the, um, police department contract for the ranking officers with a term from July 1, 2003 to June 30th, 2006.
Yes.
Councilor Grasso?
Yes.
Councilor Farini?
Yes.
Councilor Marshon?
No.
Councilor Penderlockis?
No.
Councilor Hines?
Yes.
Councilor Reynold?
Yes.
Councilor Whitehouse?
Yes.
Assistant Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Seven to two, passes.
Your honor, uh, thank you. I have another item, uh, item number-
Just a minute, I'm going to pass the chair back over to the mayor.
Okay, thank you. I have another item, meter enforcement, 2004 holiday season, uh, as is traditional in the city. I'm, uh, recommending that the city council authorize the parking division of the Public Works Department to forego meter enforcement, uh, in the downtown area from Saturday, December 11th through Saturday, December 25th. Um, the advice that if you approve this recommendation, the 15-minute and two-hour and four-hour parking meter limits will continue to be enforced during this time period. And, uh, as we heard from the last year from the Downtown Merchants Association and others, uh, we have purchased bags to put over the meters, so, uh, people will, will not inadvertently put coin into the meters. Every meter will be bagged, all 850 meters, with a holiday greeting.
Merry Christmas?
Christmas bag?
Happy holidays.
These were generic bags that we purchased, uh, that say happy holidays.
Okay, very good.
Move to authorize, uh, the Parking and Transportation Department to forego meter enforcement in the downtown area from Saturday, December 11th through Saturday, December 25th, with the stipulation that the 15-minute, two-hour and four-hour limits will be enforced.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Second, Ned, is yours a second?
Second.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion? Uh, yes, Ned?
Just a clarifying question. Um, we're, we're having free parking in the downtown, but enforcement of the time limits, the normal time limits, means that people will be ticketed if they exceed the time limit for occupying a single space.
For more than the-
Still going to get the-
Designated time, correct.
Right, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Assistant Mayor?
I still would like to see a press release put out that unfortunately, what happens is the employees of our downtown businesses think this is a, is a wonderful thing, and they park their vehicles right in front of their own businesses, uh, or that of their competitor. And if we could have, uh, the employers notify their employees to use the appropriate parking facilities and leave those open for their customers so they have a bigger turnover and hopefully a great, uh, Christmas season.
Um, all ready for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Uh, your honor, I have some informational items, but before I go into those, I just again want to reiterate my comments from the last meeting regarding the Assistant Mayor. I have worked with him for about eight years and have, uh, had the pleasure of, uh, working with him on, uh, budget matters, traffic and safety matters, and in all instances, he's been extremely professional and, uh, has been a council member, uh, who has, uh, put his heart and soul into, uh, his work. And, uh, we not only, uh, on the city staff, but, uh, others that I've worked with have commented on, on his professionalism and, uh, the way he's handled, uh, the roles that he's taken on. And again, I would be missing him, uh, greatly as he goes down to Florida, but again, would like to wish him and Deb well, uh, on their future endeavors. That's all I have, your honor.
That's all you have? Oh, all right, was you going to announce about Thanksgiving?
Uh, well, the city, uh, offices will be closed, uh, Thursday and Friday, reopen Monday.
Very good.
Uh, the trash collection will, uh, be, the day after we'll have the trash collection. It's on the website as well.
And I have to give the city, uh, credit. My son put 150 bags of leaves out by the roadway, and the neighbors across the street put 100, and they were gone this morning. Uh, so we appreciate them. Yes, uh, Harold?
Yes, your honor, thank you. It's not a listed, uh, informational item, but I would like to ask the city manager a question.
Yes, John?
Uh, your honor, um, I mean, John, in reference to the annual audit, will we be receiving it any earlier this year? Because I ask this every year. I hate to get the last meeting in December.
Well, your, if I might speak for that, your honor, um, the, the city's done its work, it's in the hands of the auditors to develop the, the product, and we hope to get it to you. I don't believe we'll have it to you, uh, for your December 6th meeting, but we will have it to you for the second meeting in December. And I know your comments, and I've, believe me, I've made comments to the auditors about it, um, and it's their work product once it's in their hands, and there is no requirement and, unless we put it in there contractually. Uh, so, uh, it will be to us in December, uh, the second meeting in December. If I can push them any harder, counselor, I will.
All right, thank you, John.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, yes?
Just a word of caution about that, because we have asked the auditors that question before. This is not like a personal or business tax return, but on December 31st, everything's cut off, and then you can start going down and seeing, uh, your tax preparer the next week, as long as you got your W-2. We're under, the modified accounting system we're under leaves the books open for 90 days. If you start rushing the auditors, we're not going to get a professional job. They're going to be under the gun because for some reason we want this done sooner than later. I'd rather have a good job and have it done professionally and done right than trying to rush it. So, a, a lot of people just are under the misconception that June 30th is over, we ought to be able to work on the audit July 1st, and it's simply not the fact. And I think that you're going to be seriously not getting your money's worth by rushing your auditors.
Very good. Um, we're down to the mayor, are you all set, John?
Yes, your honor, unless there are other questions.
Okay, any other questions of John? All right, we're down to the mayor. The first one is a consideration for the Building Code of Appeals, and that is Kathleen Brown. Now remember what I tell you, you have, uh, two weeks or more before the next council meeting to come in and talk to me if this is somebody you don't feel you want to vote for. Uh, to be voted on tonight, the Economic Development Commission is Robin McIntosh.
I'll move, second.
Uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? I have a very, very sad letter here, which I hated to take, but I did take it, is a resignation from Russell Van Bilyard, and he said, "My time is up." After about 30 years as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Community Development, I have decided to step down and retire. These 30 years have been a very worthwhile experience for me. I have learned a great deal about the very real needs of our city that we have worked to improve, to improve with our various CDBG initiatives. The community development staff is truly an outstanding group, as are the other members of the Citizens Advisory Committee. I value the friendships which have involved during my long association with, uh, both groups. Best regards to all, Russell Van Bilyard. And I want to state here and now, after 30 years, I think the man deserves a proclamation. I plan to bring one in at our next council meeting on a small gift. He is quite a person.
Your honor, I move the resignation with regret.
Did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now we're down to the Portsmouth Housing Authority, and we have another resignation. Excuse me. Please accept my resignation from the Portsmouth Housing Endowment Fund as of this date. My resignation is due to my retirement from the Portsmouth Housing Authority later this month. My best wishes for the city hall staff and other members of the fund, and I am confident that they will continue to do a great job for the city of Portsmouth. Very truly yours, Richard G. Gray, Quontrola.
Move to accept with regret, your honor.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Uh, the city, uh, the, uh, I guess so. The mayor would like to remind everyone that the Metro Restaurant on Wednesday, November 24th, between 11:30 and 2:00 PM, is going to have a Thanksgiving dinner, welcome. I just am putting this out over the airway tonight, and I know our newspapers have done quite well by me on this. I have received 102 names, as of today, that will be attending. Now, this is for the elderly, the hungry, the homeless, and any needy families, and I so hope that you will come. It's a treat, and everyone that comes every year can't get over it when they walk in there, white tablecloth, silverware, uh, you name it, and it's there. And I think Sam Jarvis deserves a lot of thanks for this. I will be coming in with a proclamation and a small gift for Sam at our next meeting, but he's just a wonderful man. So if anybody's listening or if anybody's out there that knows needy family or homeless, please tell them to come. Thank you. I just want to, before I close, I do want to say just a few words about Alec. Alec and I have been very close. I'm going to cry. But he was always there for me whenever I needed him, and I think I'm going to miss him the most.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Sorry. Alec's here now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I, um, first of all, want to put- Madam Mayor and members of the council, I, um, first of all, want to put, uh, down the rumor that someone that looked like Joanne Grasso was loading the moving truck in my front yard. It just looked like her, I can assure you, I don't think it was her, so, uh, and the driver, uh, may have looked like Bill St. Laurent, but I'm not sure about that either, so, uh, it, it's been a wonderful 11 years, and, uh, I've had a lot of calls from reporters and, uh, asking, looking back on my tenure, is what I thought was the most important thing, and, uh, it really has been a wonderful experience, and the person that's, uh, really made this a wonderful experience is the mayor. Uh, I lost to her by one vote, I went to Florida, I fell in love with Florida. We became the best of friends. We'd talk every morning at 7:30, and, uh, uh, she's a remarkable lady, and, uh, she'll be a friend forever. And I told the reporters, and they said, "Well, what do you think the most important decision you, you ever made?" And I said, "You know, it's when we hired John Bohinko as the city manager." Uh, I was on that selection committee, and, uh, Mayor Foley, uh, and I sat down with John in, uh, Mayor Foley's home at lunch, with box lunches, if I remember correctly, John, and we hammered out his contract. And then we'd bring it back to City Hall and say, "Bob put it in writing," and we'd leave and come back, and we'd go back and forth, and, uh, we got that accomplished in one afternoon. Uh, but, uh, I would urge my fellow counselors to seek, uh, the counsel of both the mayor, uh, and, uh, the city manager. Uh, talk about the issue and don't shoot from the hip. We have some wonderful department heads. Uh, the budgets that we used to see 11 years ago were wish list. They, they'd come in, if they wanted a 4% or 5% increase, they'd come in with a 10% request, and you had to figure out where the cuts and where to get it. That's not the way it is now, with the joint, uh, budget committee formed together, all as a team, uh, and all of them know exactly what's going on with, in the various departments, uh, they're all on the same page, and they're giving you very, very accurate information. It's, we have some wonderful, uh, department heads, uh, from the fire chief, the police chief, public works, the wonderful superintendent of school, you've got the most professional staff. Uh, Debbie, uh, has been through six elections, uh, and she really deserves part of the applause for, uh, putting up with this for the last 11 years, but also during that, those 11 years, I also sought office on the national level within the insurance industry and was elected twice, the first trustee, uh, from New Hampshire in 130 years. And that, we had to do a national election, we visited 36 states, 90 cities, and during that time, I, I'd turn on the local government channel and I'd watch what was happening, and I can tell you, Portsmouth has got it right. Portsmouth really has it right. Even when you read the local newspapers about what's happening in communities north and south of us, Portsmouth has really got it right. I think the Charter Commission did an excellent job, and I know Portsmouth will be in great hands with Assistant Mayor Grasso, uh, who has helped me tremendously. We've done the city manager's evaluation together, the teachers corrected my spelling, and, uh, so she'll be a, a wonderful, uh, Assistant Mayor, and I wish her the best, and I wish all of you the best, and I thank my wife very, very much for the many hours, many dinners I missed, and family functions, and, uh, we're looking forward to Florida, and we'll be back next summer and see you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alec.
I move to re-adjourn.
Uh, just one minute. Uh, at our next meeting, there will be a shift of the chairs. Uh, what will happen is this group will come up, and then Laura, you'll be over there, and that's how it's gonna work. We just switch around, okay? Very good. 'Cause I don't want to come in here like I did a few years back, and everybody said, "Oh, gee, I'm not supposed to sit there." But that's what you're gonna do, you're gonna just switch right around, okay? Very good. I, uh, huh, I, well, Tom. Uh, Harold, did you have miscellaneous?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. Uh, Judge Hosker mentioned the Christmas party on the 4th, but he forgot to mention the tree lighting on the 3rd, which is at 6:30. Very important.
Mm-hmm, and that's for the children to light the tree.
I seconded that adjournment.
Okay, very good. Uh, uh, did I get a, oh, you get a second, very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Good, sir.